Quite the DJ setup you have there.
I just know that I don't touch the buttons and I don't turn the knobs.
Probably good idea.
Yeah, I've got nine o'clock. We'll go call the meeting to order. I'm sorry, it's Pledge of Allegiance.
Mochler, Packard, here, Smith. I don't see her on there. Manning.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approve agenda. Then we need to add the right of way application for discussion at least.
So we will have an executive session for legal matters too.
Okay.
It's on as necessary on the bottom, but we're going to have one, so.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Through minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Uh, let's see. Bit acceptance for road D1 culvert replacement. You want Brad to handle that?
Yeah.
Okay. Brad, are you, can you hear us?
Is he still connected?
See him on there, but it doesn't show a mic, so not sure. He's connecting to audio.
Well, when he gets, we'll, we'll move on. Hopefully he gets connected quick. Uh, the driveway application for Barbiasino on 454.
Rod was suggesting that they take care of the culvert themselves. And he said everything else is good to go, just if they could take care of the culvert and the expense of putting the driveway in. And he approved the location of it.
Okay, and they know slope and depth that it's supposed to be.
Yep, yep. That's correct. On the paper anyway, that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tree issues on private property on Timber Road.
That, I think is where like Halverson lives.
Yeah.
Is what the case is.
Yeah, Todd called me, so I went out and took a look and I don't know for sure. Looks to me like the problem is that you could take a look at it. You probably have, but, but it looks like they're, they're actually on Cindy Struckman Johnson's property. There's nothing in the, actually in the tree. They're staying out. You cannot see coming out of his driveway at all. Till you get, you get where the mailbox is at, you gotta get actually to the mailbox and out a little bit before you can see.
So if they hang over though, they gotta come, they gotta get cut out.
Well, then that's what needs to be done.
It should be trimmed up.
Yep.
So that should be up to us to do that then?
It's our, it's our right of way.
Cause they're hanging over. There's no question there. And there, I mean, cause they're, they're on her property, right on the, you know, the, the dust line, but they ain't clear out here.
Yeah.
I don't know how she sees coming out of hers.
Oh.
To the east.
Right.
She's got just as bad. Not quite as bad, because he's got quite a real little farther out. But I drove in and drove back out just to see, cause I, when Todd called me, he said, take a look at, just drive in or drive out. So I did. And I was keep itching out trying to see how, but I had to get out quite a ways. I mean, I hate to see we get into a problem and somebody gets killed there. You know, and I guess like you're saying, if we gotta.
If the branch haves over into the right of way, our right of way.
And it is.
I know we do that with some trees.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's something that should be done. There, cause that's a busy road.
We need to talk to her though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what do we usually do? Trim up to like 20 feet or above, above grade, above the surface of the road?
Normally as far as we can reach.
Yeah.
And right now we just, we did get a boom truck, so I mean, we can reach quite a ways now.
Yeah.
We gotta get out there and do some tree trimming anyway, so we could do that on.
I know what the REA does.
Yeah.
It's straight up all the way.
Yeah. Well, well, their, their lines are
Right.
in a position where they have to go straight up. I just have recent experience on this and trimming trees at my house over on Preta Street. That the, yeah, the city, the trim knows, and I asked him about, while they were there trimming over my sidewalk, but that wasn't, that wasn't in the cards.
Well, I think part of the deal is out there is they've left those bushes, you know, get away from grow.
Yeah.
They let grow just big. So they're kind of like, you know, it's like when you had lilac bushes, you let them go and they just, they get mild. That's kind of what these are. They're not lilacs, but there's something like that.
Right.
And they're just out of control. They have never kept them, you know, trimmed up. He did tell me that a couple of years ago, when Dave was alive, her husband, he actually, they talked to him and he come out and trims a few. But he said that it was pretty, it was like flip off the ends basically.
Yeah.
And I know that Cindy hasn't been very receptive to them doing any trimming.
Well, I, I think we do need to talk to her.
Yeah.
And, and to, uh, in, in the second sentence or before, you know, the, the public safety.
Yeah.
Magic words that'd be mentioned, I think.
Who, who's the we? When you say we are going to talk to her.
Well, I was thinking actually if Betty would have been here today, I was gonna sit suggest Betty, because I know she's in the severe club with her. And I thought that would have been the perfect person, you know, somebody that would, would work with her up at the university and did that. I mean, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I know I'm not the person. Because I know she doesn't care for me much, so I don't think that I'm the person to go talk to her. And obviously Horverson's have had some issues with it, what I understand.
So.
You know her?
I know her, but I don't know.
Not that close.
Yeah.
I can, I can do that. If we can get her, her number, phone number, I'll try driving out there first and do that in person.
Okay. That'd be great then.
Yeah.
Yep. And then let us know, I guess, what you find out from her.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's a, it's a.
I would assume we're gonna have to trim them, so we're not trimming every year.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any more on that then?
No. I'll let Todd know that we're looking into it then.
Okay, thank you.
I think Brad's on now.
Yep.
Brad, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay. The bid acceptance for, for road D1 culvert replacement.
Yeah, so, so, so that's prepared. That's a notice, notice of award. Um, so it, it, it's a you know, formality, but I send that out to the contractors. Some of them need that to get their bonds. So, um, I guess, yeah, I recommend that we award that contract.
This contract is for $33,491.70. So I'll entertain a motion.
I also move to accept the contract.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Who, who ended up getting it?
It's Two Rivers, Two Rivers Contracting. Um, they're out of North Sioux City.
Okay.
Guy's name's Tanner Vittito.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Okay, so, so what happens now is I, is, is I will send that to him and I'll prepare the, a contract for him to sign. And then he'll return it to me with you, and I'll have him attach the, his performance bond, payment bond and insurance certificate. When I get all those back, I'll look at them, then I'll send you the contract to, to sign. So that usually takes a week or so.
I still need to sign this notice of award though, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I need to sign that award. And then Carrie, if you could send that to me today, I'll get that contract out to him straight away.
Yep, I'll do that after the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad.
Anything else for me or?
Um, we're gonna just got your invoice for ditch board.
Oh, okay.
Need to go ditch board for that first.
Yep, yep. I'll, I'll mute it and I'll just, I'll just hang on the line here then.
Okay. So we've gotten through everything for the, for Larry. Um, I'll entertain a motion for ditch board.
Motion to go into ditch board.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in ditch board. Now we're back, Brad.
Glad you hung on.
We should have different paths.
Do we have an invoice for Brad that I need to sign or?
Nothing to sign. It's just the invoice of just authorization to pay it.
I'll move to authorized statement of. I don't have it in front of me.
Seven twenty-two seventy-five. Is that right?
Looks like it.
Yeah.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Do you have anything else, Brad, on that?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you guys later.
And then we've got, uh, the, the newspaper.
Should we come out of dish board?
It's for ditch board. The
Oh, it is.
Uh, payment of publications to the, the new era and the plain talk broadcaster.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Don't think anybody has anything else for ditch board. Take a motion to come out.
Motion to come out of ditch board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We're in regular session. Uh, let's see. Way ahead of time here. Everybody can see vouchers and payrolls.
I just realized I forgot to send those out, so I just emailed them out to you. It's a pretty small batch of vouchers because, um, last week was, you know, the bulk of them with our meeting being a week later, so.
Definitely want to take a minute to look at them first.
Yeah.
Or do you want to wait till next week to approve them?
Yeah.
I'll give it to you that long. You said we're ahead of time anytime.
Yeah, we're, we're 15 minutes ahead of the.
Burn a little time.
Yeah, no, no, not yet. We'll do that quick too.
Oh.
We'll discuss that.
Oh, okay.
I will move to approve the vouchers.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You good, Dick?
Looks good.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Well, I was just thinking how, how expensive carriage bolts we got nowadays.
Everything.
Yes.
Um, so we've got a right of way application from Reed Bird across East Maine. I don't have the application in front of me. Did you print one off, Carrie?
Um, I emailed it out to you guys yesterday. I did not print it because I wasn't sure if you guys were gonna add it or not. Um, didn't know if Larry would be bringing the original or not, so.
Okay, so, so my only concern with it is the landowner is not the one applying for this and they're crossing the road. This is the tenant that's doing it. I, I'm sure they're aware of it, but I would like somehow for them to acknowledge it. For me anyway, because if anything happens to the road, it's gonna go against that landowner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He didn't buy this, did he?
According to Beacon Center, but.
Okay, that's what I'm just asking. That's why I was wondering.
And the corner is still standing. It's not like they're gonna tile tomorrow.
Yeah, he may have, it might be. You, you think tiling that, uh, if he's paying for the, he wouldn't be paying for the tiling.
Well, that happens a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does a lot more of it used to.
Yeah.
Can you find out, if he, if he owns it, or we need some sort of?
Find out who the landowner actually is.
Well, I looked it up.
Contact.
Um, I, I want, I'd like, I'd like something that says that they're aware of it. But this is happening.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, yep.
Does that, does that have to be in writing then, or?
Should be.
Be nice or, or an, or an email.
Yeah, email, an email acknowledgement.
Would you guys have that up at the?
Reads a pretty straight shooters.
Right, but would you have it up at the register?
What, who the owner is?
Yeah.
They said.
Read with no, I mean, just tell him, read, tell him that's what we need.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Unless he's bought it. I mean, if he's, if he's the new one.
Or not, if he's the owner. Okay.
And then we can put it on for next Tuesday.
Okay. Let you know.
Okay. Everybody have anything else for that?
No, no, it would just be good to mention to, to the owner that, uh, there is, only real question is that there be possible liability down the road for road issues. No other objection than that.
Yep, yep, okay.
And those are very minimal. The risk is minimal.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that the landowner knows that they're going across the road.
Right.
Cause they're hitting, they're hitting that ravine, so I mean. It's not an issue for Down Street.
Get a hold of him.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Lexi, do you have anything on the opioid settlement?
That would be more me. Um, I finally did get the contract by DocuSign for us to sign to be able to receive the funding. Um, I wasn't able to print it from DocuSign, but I have it so that if Travis is authorized to sign it, he can just, I can get him logged in up in my office and get that done.
My experience with the DocuSign is you sign it and then they send you
Yeah.
final copy.
And usually I've been able to go in and print a PDF and it wouldn't let me do that this time, so.
Able to the last numerous times doing that.
So I'll entertain a motion to authorize that signature.
Move to authorize your signature.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. This table is annoying.
I can hear it.
Little squeaky.
Yeah.
We're gonna take a 10 minute recess. While I go find some WD-40. Okay, we're back in session. The first reading of ordinance 2022-12 and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2021-05. Ordinance creating licensing regulations for medical cannabis establishments. Drew?
I'm thinking I probably sent them the right version, cause I pulled it off the website, so was it, okay?
So updated one, got, uh, realized about 10 o'clock last night and we updated for since morning, so. Yeah, same license we've seen a couple of times. Comments, questions, concerns?
No.
Yes, I, I'd move to approve.
It's just the first reading.
So just, that's what I was wondering.
We just need to move it or just set the date and time for the next one.
Move to the next.
Do you have a?
Wednesday, next.
Next Tuesday we meet. I mean, is that?
I guess it's five days. Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next, what is that, October?
October 6th.
Really, October 6th? Isn't the first Saturday?
Um, October 4th, sorry.
Geez, we caught her being wrong once.
I try not to let it happen too often.
Didn't say you were wrong. I want that on the record.
I did.
It was a computer problem. Yeah, computer problems.
So like October 4th at 9:30?
Yeah.
It's, uh, as I often say, if that's, uh, is, if that's as bad as it gets today, I'm a happy man.
I will take a motion to set that date and time.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
He's like, you've been here a lot, John.
He's not showing you either.
No, I know it.
So we're good on that. Nothing else, you're right?
No, no. Yeah, he'll be coming in next, maybe even, depends when I get the notice. He's got the rezone for his new facility coming up. Just did that at the board last night. So they got the hemp grinder. That's already all zone permanent. As far as county goes, and we'll start on the, uh, grow facility, so.
Gonna call it the green mile.
That's for me.
I don't know. I don't know if I'd call it that. Back to the movie. Oh, I like that. You gotta have an aim for it, right?
Yeah, uh, Five Star Cannabis is the establishment name and then Dakota Hemp for the decortication plant.
Okay.
Cool. Sounds good. Thanks, Drew. Uh, we got the budget discussion.
Great, good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So are we approving the payrolls right now too then?
Yes.
Cause don't we usually do that in December for some reason?
I try to have it done all the, at the same time with the budget, but last year I, it got away from me and yeah, it was like November before I got it done.
So just to bring Mike up to date, the last, at the last meeting, of course you watched.
I watched it.
Did you see the discussion on our, on our raises and all?
Right.
Okay.
That you guys willing to give up your raises in order to fund the library and the
Arts Council.
Arts Council.
Now is that, I did the math right, right? That was just, I'm sure it's saving a little more than 13,000, but I thought that was the
I think you're probably pretty accurate.
Cause I know I didn't add the seven and a half percent in, but the county pays for us.
Right.
The only thing I'll say is, is I did talk to somebody that's on the library board. And they said if they did not get money this year, it wasn't gonna be a big deal. They would be all right this year. So that's, I just, I throw that out there, but the other thing was, I do know the food pantry is never planned on it. So that's, but I mean, it's not like they would take the money. And, uh, says that is, it's always bothered me a little bit that we give money to LifeScape Sioux Falls and we don't give anything to says that. You know, we boys automatically did LifeScape. That was never a question, but, but, uh, not picking on Jerry here.
We haven't, we haven't paid LifeScape this year though.
We have.
No.
Okay.
No.
They got cut. Okay, then I'm fine with it. It, uh, it's, it always bothered me in the past, you know, but says that it's, they're, they'll be fine. But I think it's, I appreciate if you guys would look at it in the future to maybe put those two back on if there's a job opportunity. Cause those are fairly important to the community, I think.
Well, hopefully the jail safety center passes.
Yes.
In a couple of years, then the budget will be completely different.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. And that's, I just want to fill that out there though.
How are we on contingency for this year?
Well, um, so far, so good.
The only reason I ask is when Greg Peters came in and asked for $4,000 to finish those welcome signs.
Yeah.
When they got built, we were an equal partner in building those. I would like to see those finished somehow, if we can, if we can take the 4,000 other contingency for this year, it'll work. And we don't have to make that decision today. We can get closer to the end of the year and see where we're at.
If we have it, I could agree to it.
Yeah, I'm not.
If we don't, I can't.
If we don't, we don't.
Yeah. We should be able to postpone that decision until the first meeting in December anyway, shouldn't we, at least?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have a better idea of where we're at then for sure, so.
It was, really all it's gotta be done by is the last meeting.
Yeah.
Of the year.
Yeah. Well, we should even, we should have a fair snow forecast by then.
Yeah.
Something we could scooch over into the end of this year.
That would be nice, though. I think that to, to, to help finish that.
I think since we, since we helped start the project.
It's hopefully if we can make Clay County look a little better, the city of rebellion, that it, it helps drive in some, hopefully some taxes into this businesses in here and some housing, so we get more taxes, cause that's what drives us.
A nice shade of blue, I think.
Yeah. Purple?
Purple.
Red.
Red and blue.
So is there any other questions on the budgets or concerns?
No. This, this printing here does not have the library added in for the commissioners.
Right, I haven't added in any of those others that were cut last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it should, the dollar should be the same.
Should be the same anyway.
Raise for the next year.
Yeah. Yep.
Arts Council will be, to be washed that way. Can I say something?
Yeah.
Um, I was coming to support the library, but it sounds like you guys are putting your own skin into the game, so. Um, I was coming to support the library, but it sounds like you guys are putting your own skin into the game, so home run.
That's correct.
Yeah, we were trying to figure out how to pay for it, not change the budget. Yeah, well, I saw, well, we'll use our raises, so congratulations, I can go home now and have another cup of coffee.
And be successful.
Yeah, yours was a successful trip.
I'll tell Dan.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for recognizing how to pay, this will help.
Yeah, and this is actually, more accurately, this is for all three of the libraries we traditionally fund. It's not just the Vermillion Library.
Okay, I'll tell them that, so he's, he sent his attack dog down here, but there's no problems, as far as I see. Thank you for uh, being on the wall.
Thank you.
And I'm getting muzzled again.
Know the feeling.
But I'm allowed to complain about it, so.
So do we need an approval?
We do, I'm just trying to think, there was
Is there anything else?
Just back in my brain, I don't think, I think everything was pretty straightforward, I don't think we changed anything really.
I think the only other thing that I had in my notes as kind of a question item towards the end um, was there was some equipment budget money that Rod said he may not need if you wanted to cut that out, but if you wanted to leave it in, then that was up to you, so.
That was a shuffle from this budget year to next
Right.
But budget year for the flatbed. That's right, sweeper. Sweep.
And I don't have, I don't have that note with me right now, but I want to say it was something like three hundred thousand.
We can leave it there, he just doesn't need to spend it if he doesn't need it.
Yeah.
At least we know where the money's at.
You know, or you, you know, if you wanted to take it out, it can, it just sits in the fund then, you know, and I thought that's up to you, but.
I think maybe just leave it in there for now.
Yeah, it's, it could be simpler, I mean, he can always turn it back and the budget books fine.
Works for me, so.
Twenty-four point whatever percent.
That works for me.
Yeah, so we've got a, we've got a legal and reasonable cushion.
What I didn't look at was, do the commissioners have money in there for like that, you know, furniture to finish this room off?
So I originally did have money in there for laptops. Um, and you guys went ahead and got those this year, obviously because you needed them. So there is money in there for those um, that can be used for desks instead, obviously, so. Because it's in that furniture, minor equipment line.
Do you know how much it was?
Um, let me take a look at that, I can pull it up.
Because unfortunately, this desk is expensive.
These are very white.
These aren't, or what we're, what we're contemplating on getting built is
Right.
Seven, eight thousand, probably ten maybe.
Yeah, it's yeah, it seems like a lot for something like this and and you keep thinking that uh we could if we had wider sets similar to this could work, I don't mind being, this is, I'm right-handed, so this, this part I can crouch on Mike's Mike's space a little bit.
Okay, you know what?
I always require a lot of paper.
I take that back, I must have adjusted it down right when you guys ordered the laptop, I have fifteen hundred in there, so you might want to add some in there for a desk.
Well, it's low enough priority, we can leave that in contingency too.
That's fine.
Use it if we need it.
Okay.
And we got Scott's figured out.
Should be okay. Entertaining a motion.
Yep.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-three Clay County budget.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Do we need one for the payroll then too?
Yeah.
Take a motion to accept payroll, which is a total amount of three million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Does that reflect our raise not being in there?
No, it doesn't, um, let me change that and I'll get you an updated sheet to sign. That's an easy one to take out pretty quick here.
And added in on the libraries line.
Yep. Hers doesn't go under payroll because she's not one of our employees, but it'll go under accounts payable at the end of the year, so yes, that's in there. Yes.
Rhonda, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Did you want to come down or are you going to do it from Zoom?
Nope, I'll be down in just a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so then the updated payroll figure, if I'm doing this correctly, should be, and are you looking at the bottom, bottom line after the after retirement and all that? Three million, six forty-four, one eleven and forty-six cents.
Six forty-four.
Lost my formulas incorrect, yes, six forty-four.
Yeah, three million, six forty-four, what was the next?
One eleven and forty-six cents.
And I can just sign that upstairs.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'll take a motion on the payroll for three million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-six cents.
So move.
Sure.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion passes. So all we've got left is executive session. So once Rhonda gets down here, we'll move on to executive session. Rhonda. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to say what it's for though?
Both legal.
For legal, I just make sure.
So we're in executive session, so.
Okay, let me pause this and move people.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Move to adjourn.
Second, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we're adjourned, thank you.
So are you, Carrie, you got to contact Erickson?
Um, I did.